From the Utah State Board of Education. So we are so thankful that you guys are here with us tonight. And just a few housekeeping things. As you're coming into the chat room, if you will please enter your first and last name, as well as what district or charter your children go to, or that you're connected with. Also, another thing, I do know that we have some teachers that are on board with us, and we want to welcome you as well. But we are going to ask that you put your teacher hat off, take your teacher hat off, and put your parent hat on. So we're going to be focusing on parents and children tonight as we go through with this. Any other things, any other housekeeping things?
I don't think so right now.
Okay. How this will work is we have a PowerPoint, you'll see that as we go through. We will ask you discussion questions. We'll kind of have some discussion between us. And you guys will discuss in the chat box. You'll have your answers as we're asking you questions. We'll bring up some of those. And then Crystal and Esperanza are here also to help us with the chat. So they'll be conversing with you as well. This is our second time this year that we've done this book study. We had a couple of weeks off. And the chat box is really great. You guys become kind of your own little community. And it's great to see all of the... It's hard to keep up with you, first of all, as we're kind of talking with you. But it's great to see that you guys are encouraging each other, giving each other ideas. And that's what we hope that this will help you tonight with. So with that, I guess we'll get started.
Okay, so we're going to start with Chapter 1. Hopefully, you guys had a chance to read it. I just want to point out that if you didn't have a chance to read the book, that's fine. We have included in the materials that each of you received, a study guide, which kind of summarizes the chapter. So we understand that sometimes life happens.
Right.
And you guys are all busy parents and professionals. So if you don't...
I'll age myself and just call them Cliff Notes. That's what they were back in my day. I understand now they're Spark Notes.
So, you know, always feel free to join us, even if you didn't get a chance to read it, and just refer to the short version that we sent out in the study guide. So we're going to start with Chapter 1. And the first question is, as you read through Chapter 1, what surprised you? What made you feel uncomfortable? And what did you agree or disagree with? So you can start to type your answers into the chat box. And we will highlight some of your answers and kind of respond to you through the chat as well. So as far as some of the things that I got out of Chapter 1 was that you... The way that you think about things can really influence the way you perceive the world around you. And I think the whole attitude about mindsets was really introduced in Chapter 1 and what that means. So you can either have that fixed mindset, or that growth mindset. And for some of you, this may have been the first time that you really heard this terminology of fixed versus growth mindset. But it really resonated with me and made a lot of sense that the way we look at things in the world can really change how we act. So I think that is a really important distinguishing feature between a growth mindset and a fixed mindset. We have somebody in the chat box that's saying they can't hear. There is a number that you should have all received in the instructions for the book study. There's a call-in number that you can try. You can call the call-in number if you can't hear on your computer. So I believe the call-in number is 1-872-240-3412. So if you can't hear on the computer, we'll type this in the text box if you're having trouble with the audio.
So for me, I thought it was interesting. This is the first time I've been studying mindsets now for about, probably just a couple of years, two to three years. And so, and that was my first understanding of fix versus growth. It totally made sense to me, but that's not, that's not how I maybe put the label on it, or what. But what I did like, there was one section in the book that said, "The view you adopt for yourself profoundly affects the way you lead your life. It can determine whether you become the person you want to be, and whether you accomplish the things that you value." And that really kind of stuck with me as I think about my childhood and, you know, things weren't always very easy for me, but I still persisted and kept, because there were things that I wanted to do.
We have a comment from Valerie. She says, "I was surprised that I have a much more fixed mindset. I have pushed past a lot of obstacles in life, so it surprised me." I think a lot of us, as we read through the chapter, may have found that there may be some areas we had a growth mindset with, and some areas that we had a fixed mindset with. And she does point out that that is fairly common, that there might be, you might have a mix of both growth and fixed mindset in your life, depending on the situation. And I think all of us probably found that there were definitely areas we had a fixed mindset in. And you have to keep in mind that all of this is about change.
Right.
And we can't expect ourselves to change all at once either. So we have to have that growth mindset, that if you do have areas you have a fixed mindset with, that's going to take time to change that too. So be realistic with yourself, and don't expect that you're going to magically change all of the things you might have found at once either.
But isn't that also great, at the same time that I don't always have to have a fixed mindset? That we can learn to have a growth mindset? We can be taught, and it can be developed along our way? I mean, that's what I loved about this. I know when I'm in a fixed mindset. Do I express it? No, I don't. But I know deep inside when I am kind of digging my heels in and saying, "I can't do this, it's too hard," kind of thing.
Marcy said she was surprised that she had both. I really felt I was on the fence as I was reading it. Yeah, you know, and that's one thing that surprised me too, to know that you could have both in different scenarios.
Yep.
You know, I think that that's really true, that a lot of us do have both. Crystal says she was shocked to find out that she also had a fixed mindset. Thank you for sharing that. Jody said she was surprised to learn that there is a definition for these thought processes. Yeah, you know, I think we've all felt a lot of these things, but maybe we haven't had words to put to those feelings before.
Right. In the realm of research, this research still, while it's 30 years, that's still kind of fairly new, right? I mean, I think even though she's been researching it for 30 years, I mean, it was just two or three years ago before I had heard of it, right? So I think it's still kind of in its infancy. Maybe not its infancy, maybe it's in the teenage years now. I like Ashley's comment. Do you think that fixed mindset has a lot to do with the culture that we were raised in? The one way of thinking? My personal opinion, yes, absolutely. I have a 94... I have to think about how old she's going to be in me. 94-year-old grandmother, and I took care of her for seven years. Wow, as I was reading this, I'm like, oh wow, she definitely has a very fixed mindset.
We have a comment from Carly. She says, "Interesting that fixed mindset is about proving yourself over and over. That's something that we're going to dive deeper into as we go through this book study, and we're going to talk about that quite a bit." But there are some real challenges with a fixed mindset, and some thought patterns that we get stuck in when we have a fixed mindset. So you're right about that, and that's something that we're going to talk about. What are some of the ruts that we get into?
Right.
When we have these fixed mindsets, and how can we change some of those?
Right, absolutely.
Okay. So I think we're going to move ahead to the next question. You guys are sharing some really good thoughts, and we really appreciate your openness. I can tell this is going to be a very...
Absolutely.
...active group, and we appreciate all of your participation so far. Okay, Becky?
Okay, so question number two. Can you think of a time you faced an important opportunity or challenge with a fixed mindset? What were your thoughts and worries about your abilities, about other people's judgments, about that possibility of failure? One thing that I was thinking of when I read this question over again, I thought about the time that I left the classroom. I had been in the same school for 13 years, and I was embarking on a new challenge. I had become a district math specialist in special education. And I thought, I thought, oh my gosh, I have this job. What if I can't do it? What am I going to do? What are people going to think of me? What if I fail? And I kept second-guessing my decision, which to me, that's kind of a little bit of a fixed mindset, right? Here, I took the plunge, and I applied for it, I got it. But then when I got it, I felt like I couldn't do it. And so, it was, it was hard. I mean, it was a hard thing to go through, and it was a hard thing to know that I was really putting myself out there, much more than I ever had before. I know you all wouldn't believe it here in the room with me, but I'm a quite reserved person. And so, going out on that limb, stretching myself, was a big risk that I took. And obviously, I've grown a lot from it, but that's one thing that came to mind for me.
Okay, looks like we have a couple of comments. Kristen said, "I was always so afraid as a student to raise my hand and try for an answer. I was not sure of how to ask a question, and I didn't want to look dumb to others. Now I encourage my kids to ask so they can learn." I think this is a really great example, because how many of our kids have this experience every day, where they feel nervous about engaging as a student, because they are afraid of failing, or being rejected by their peers, or being rejected by a teacher, or looking dumb?
Right.
I know I've experienced this even with my own kids. I've got a 17-year-old, and he's very reserved, and he definitely has this fear. And it's been hard to get him to come out of his shell a little bit and engage as a student. He definitely has fears about looking dumb, or just engaging with other people.
It's a very real thing, very real.
Yeah, and so I think that's a great example, that sometimes it doesn't have to be a major obstacle. Sometimes it can just be an everyday thing, like being able to engage in a classroom setting. So sometimes the challenges are major life changes, like a new job, or a big opportunity. And sometimes they're just everyday challenges that we face. And maybe we're limiting ourselves a little bit, because we're afraid to take those little risks too. So, you know, I think it goes with big risks. Sometimes we are afraid to try those, and sometimes it's much smaller things. So I think that's a great example.
Right. I also was thinking about my oldest son, who is 28. And he's very much the child that if he's five minutes late for turning in an assignment, he just won't turn it in. You know, it's just done, he's not looking back, and he's not really going forward either. And so, I feel bad for him, because, you know, he's graduated from college, but he wasn't able to get into physical therapy school. And so now he's taking, now he's looking at the future, and he won't reapply, he won't look at other places to apply. He's done with that, over with that, and now he wants to just go back to school and choose something else to do. And I, he's in such a place that I can't talk to him about persistence and kind of working through that. But a lot of that is also, I wasn't aware of all of this as he was growing up, would have loved to have had all of this when my kids were little.
And we have another good example from Jody. She said, "Earlier in my career, my supervisor encouraged me to apply for a volunteer position with a nonprofit organization. I felt like I wasn't on the same level as the other directors, because I was so young and new to the industry. I did apply and got the position, and served for several years." You know, so sometimes we do feel afraid of things, and I don't think the purpose of this book is to tell us it's not okay to be afraid of things.
No.
I think it's telling us that sometimes we have to take those risks, and take a chance on things. And when we do that, we're opening ourselves up to new experiences and new learning opportunities. And there always is that chance of failure, but the point of this book is that we can learn from failures we might experience.
Right.
It's not guaranteeing us that when we take risks, we'll never have failures. It's saying that having failures is part of the learning process, and we need to be open to having new experiences in order to open ourselves up to those learning opportunities that are around us.
And that's what, that's the message that we need to share with our kids, right? We need to share with them, you know, that just because we haven't reached something right now, doesn't mean with a little bit of hard work, and a little bit of persistence, that we can't reach it.
We have another comment. Just recently, "I started taking a class about getting education to help find a better work and going back to school at age 36. I was already labeling myself as I might be a failure, and not having the smarts of a high schooler, and just moving out of high school. They are fresh in the knowledge field, and I have been out of the workforce for 10-plus years. I have a feeling of inadequacy and fear." You know, I can relate to that. I actually didn't get my bachelor's degree until I was in my 30s as well. So I can relate to the feeling of going to school with a bunch of young kids who are just out of high school, and feeling like, wow, you know, they have an advantage over me, because they're fresh out of high school. But on the other hand, it was a great experience for me, and I feel really proud that I was able to have that accomplishment. And just because you're older doesn't take away from that accomplishment. And I'm really glad that I was able to do that in my life, and I'm glad that I took that risk to do that.
Well, and I think it opens up for those younger people, that they have something to offer to you, but you also have something to offer to them.
And I will say that because I was older, I had a lot of more experience in life. And I was actually able to be a mentor to a lot of the younger students that didn't have a lot of the experiences that I had.
Awesome.
And my teachers often assigned me to be a tutor and a mentor to some of the other students who were struggling in different ways, because they didn't have any life experience, or the same types of life experiences that I had had.
Right.
So, you know, I think sometimes in those situations, it can seem intimidating, but there is a lot of value in taking some of these risks, and opening yourselves up to some of those experiences, even though there's also some challenges with it.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think we're going to go ahead and move to the next question. So this is kind of talking about our kids. We've talked a little bit about having, taking risks, and what that means in our own lives. But what are some strategies that you can use to help your child face an important opportunity with a growth mindset? So we just got done talking about how it can be challenging for us to face a new opportunity with a growth mindset, and sometimes we go into it with that fixed mindset. And I think oftentimes, our kids feel the same way. They're people too.
Absolutely, just little.
And they face a challenge or an opportunity, and sometimes they feel scared, they feel worried about that opportunity, and they might even be resistant to that opportunity. So in our role as a parent, how can we help our kids face opportunities with a growth mindset versus that fixed mindset? And keeping in mind what we just talked about, how it feels scary, and it can feel overwhelming to us as adults, and thinking that kids don't even have the same emotional skill set we have as adults.
And haven't had the same experiences that we've had, right?
Right. And, you know, I have two kids of my own. I have a 17-year-old, who is on the autism spectrum, and I have a nine-year-old, who has ADHD. So they both have some emotional regulation issues. And this has been a big challenge for me as a parent, to figure out, how do I help them face new opportunities in their life with that growth mindset? Because both of them, when faced with an opportunity or a challenge, kind of want to disengage, and just run the other direction.
Right.
That's kind of both of their styles.
Right.
And so, I've had to really work hard as a parent to figure out, how do I help them look at challenge as a good thing, and really engage in learning opportunities with a positive mindset? Some of the strategies I've used is to slowly build up to that challenge, so help them engage with little steps along the way, rather than...
So scaffold that experience a little bit.
Right, right. Because sometimes, you know, if I say, "We're going to do this," and it seems too overwhelming, they're like, "Uh-uh." But if I can slowly build up to that with smaller activities along the way, that seems to be a successful strategy with my kids.
That's a great one. Crystal in our chat box says, "I think by modeling through verbalizing out loud our thought processes as we are going through our challenges." I can't say how much enough that is so important. Our kids need to hear what we're doing. That's our modeling for them, right? If we're keeping it all in, how can we, how can we share that with them?" So great strategy with that one.
Just trying to catch up on the chats a little bit.
Before I came over here tonight, because I knew we had this question tonight, I actually was pondering, you know, I have some family members that I have been kind of working with a little bit on teaching their kids to fail. And I know, I know that that sounds weird, but teaching them how to work through that failure. And so, I was doing a couple of Google searches, and I wanted, I wanted some, and I need to refine it a little bit more, but I wanted to find some kids' books that really highlight famous people who got famous by making mistakes, right? And so, just a little bit of time that I had to do with that. You know, of course Einstein is always one of those, but Steve Jobs was one with the Apple computer. He was being, he was being, I think he'd been fired from Apple, right after his first, after that, his first like Apple IIIe or something like that. So it's just interesting. I think we just need to, I think in our culture, we have such a performance-based in culture, that it's always on the end game, but it does not show the struggles that these people really went through. You know, we just had the, and I'm going to get it wrong, and my boys will laugh at me later, but the, whatever the big MBA thing is over the weekend, President's Day weekend that we had, I know our jazz player, who I cannot name, just won the slam dunk contest. But they showcase all of their, the end product of their hard work. They were not showcasing to our kids enough all that it took for them to get through there. So I think we need to find those, seek those out, and show those to our kids.
We did have a question from Jen. She was asking that she's hoping there's more information about skills to work with our kids, and teach these concepts throughout the book and the book study. Definitely, we have questions in every single session that we'll be talking about parenting skills. You'll also receive the chat log every week, so you'll be able to read through all the comments, because I know it's going really quick. But you'll receive a log of all the comments, so you can read through those and other people's suggestions as well. And there is other information in the book as well. So hopefully...
We're also recording this, and that'll be uploaded onto YouTube in a few days after the session, so you can go back and listen to it as well.
And also, we have a surprise at the end planned. So if you attend two out of the three sessions, you will be receiving some additional parent support materials that you can use at home with your kids. And those are really helpful and fun. They're all based around teaching your kids mindset skills. Their principles and other things, activities that you can do with your kids at home.
Don't tell them the surprise.
So, so there's lots of things that we have planned moving forward that will deal with these types of issues.
So Valerie, at 7:20, your comment. "I feel that the best thing I can do for them is to not project my reservations on them. I try to encourage my kids to dig deep, work hard, and grow from this new opportunity. I also remind them that they will fail sometimes, but I will always be there to help them back up and get them back on track." Absolutely, great strategy for that. Love that. Thank you for that comment. I really appreciate how open everybody is on the chat box. I'm not keeping up very well, but I really appreciate the comments that are coming in.
Another comment was, "I try not to say I can't around my kids." You know, I think a lot of times, our kids are modeling what they see us doing, and they can't underestimate the value of that.
Sometimes a little too much.
So if we are using positive mindset strategies in the way we talk, and the way we do things, I think our kids will pick up on that. So I think that's a great suggestion.
So Dee Larson, "Remind them of the trials that they've ever come in the past. Model this still in your life, and share how you ever came through your hard work." My boys could tell you that they're sick of the story that I have shared, but I, when I went to, when I was in high school, and I was a senior, it was my goal to go to BYU, graduate, become a teacher. I've never wanted to do anything else but become an educator. When I got the lovely ACT score back, which I still don't remember what it is to this day, I think I've blocked that out, my counselor called me in and told me not only would I never graduate from BYU, but I would never graduate from any college, and that I needed to find something else to do with my life. So for literally about 30 minutes, that crushed me. And I very distinctly remember going into the cafeteria, and sitting at the table, and just crying, because she had just crushed all my dreams. And then something kind of clicked in me. I won't say it's a growth mindset, I won't say it's fixed mindset, I'll say it was stubbornness, because I thought, "How dare you tell me that I can't do something that I wanted to my entire life?" And so, I share that with my boys, probably a little bit too often to them. But I, college wasn't easy for me. It took me a long time to get through school, but I did. And when I graduated, you can bet, I found that counselor back in my hometown, and sent her a little announcement of my graduation, along with a copy of my teaching certificate. And with a little note that said, "Please don't tell kids that they can't do things."
We have some good suggestions coming through on books that you could use with your kids to teach them about the growth mindset. In your packet, we also included a list of books, videos, and we'll kind of talk more about that in one of our later sessions. But there is some good suggestions coming through the chat box, and there is a resource page that you should have all received as well, that has some suggestions as well. So thank you for sharing that. Okay, I think we are ready to move on to our next question.
Is this one mine?
Yes. So we're moving on to Chapter 2, which is Inside the Mindsets.
Okay. So when do you feel smart? When you're doing something flawlessly, or when you were learning something new? So I've kind of thought about this question this afternoon, and I kind of think for me, I think it's both times. Why would I not feel smart when I'm doing something flawlessly? But I think that where I gain the most satisfaction is when I have tried something, worked at something for so long, and accomplished it on my own. So I'm recently divorced, and so there are a lot of new things that I'm, that I'm doing, and I'm feeling kind of proud of myself when I can put some furniture together, or something like that, or hang a picture straight, or something. So, something that I didn't normally do on my own.
Well, and I've kind of written down that for me, when I'm not doing something flawlessly, I have to make a lot of effort in order to feel good about it. So for me, it definitely doesn't come naturally, and it takes a lot of effort for me.
Me too.
To really look at it from that growth mindset, I tend to sort of feel upset, just naturally, like, oh, you know, I'm really annoyed that this isn't going better. And so, I have to put quite a bit of effort into looking at it with that growth mindset. And, you know, if you realize that about yourself, I think that's the first step, is realizing that that's how you are.
Right.
And then you can be more conscious of that, more aware, and then you can think to yourself, "Okay, I need to reframe this in my mind," and kind of remind yourself that maybe there's a different way I can look at this. Maybe I can look at it as a learning experience, and say to myself, "What am I learning right now? What can I get out of this experience?
Right.
What can I do differently? You know, how could I change this so it could be a better experience?"
I do think it's kind of changed over time too. Of course, I think when we're kids, we want things to come easier to us, maybe. But I just feel like when, when things have, you know, when it's, when I've worked hard on something, and I finally accomplished it, like going to school, getting my degrees, I mean, that's, that's quite the accomplishment, and I feel good about that.
A lot of people are saying kind of both for them. They feel smart when they're doing things flawlessly, and when they're doing something new. And... They feel smart when they're doing things flawlessly and when they're doing something new. That's great, you know, it's, it's good to have both experiences and I think all of us feel good when we're, we're doing something flawlessly and, but there's a lot that can be learned for doing something new as well. Valerie says she feels good best when she's mastered something, not in the trying. And like I just said, you know, I think sometimes it's, it's changing that mindset within yourself.
Right.
And once we're aware that that's how we are, then we can really work on, how do we change that mindset?
Absolutely.
Jody says she feels smart when I do something flawlessly. I feel like I've mastered it, so I must be smart. We're gonna talk about that a little later in the book study, that concept of what makes somebody smart. And, yeah, and that is very tied to that fixed mindset when we think, "In order to be smart, I have to do something perfectly."
Right.
It's very common and it's kind of a rut a lot of us get stuck in.
Well, and I do believe in the first chapter, she did say that fixed mindset creates an urgency to prove yourself over and over, right? So, that comes along a little bit with that.
Yeah, but I think that's a great point, that, that concept of we kind of get in this pattern where we feel like, you know, "I'm not smart unless I'm doing everything flawlessly." And it puts a lot of pressure on you on a personal level to always feel like you have to prove yourself in that way.
Absolutely, absolutely. These comments are awesome. I can barely keep up, so I'm glad we have two people keeping up for us.
We have another person that says, "When I do something new and work really hard, it brings me the most satisfaction." That's great. That means that most likely you're looking at that with a real growth mindset. And that's awesome that you're able to do that. That shows that you're really understanding the value of learning along the way. So, that's great.
For me, right now, I'm trying to, since my divorce, I'm trying to challenge myself to, to try new things that I normally would not have. And that has been where I've kind of, kind of have encountered that fixed versus growth mindset. The fixed mindset says, "No, you can't do this, can't do that." And then, the growth mindset says, "Yes, you can, just work at it. You can do it, have the courage." We are just reading the comments, trying to catch up a little bit.
Michelle says, "This is amazing how similar the fixed mindset is to perfectionism. I wonder what the author would say, is it the same?" You know, it's a really interesting question. I think there is, perfectionism is very tied to that fixed mindset that's described in the book. That feeling that you have to do everything flawlessly, perfectly, or else you're a failure or you're dumb or you're not smart. She doesn't phrase it in that manner throughout this book. She doesn't call it perfectionism, but I think there probably is a correlation between the two.
It makes sense to me, yeah, absolutely. Michelle Ricks from Twilla School District. A math teacher that she said for, had the kids do a math worksheet, go over it, and then have each child throw the paper in the recycle box. What a great way to teach that the learning is more important than the end product. I love that, being a math teacher, I love that. I think I would have had a lot of meltdowns and I did have a lot of meltdowns with students. I had one student in particular that was, that was labeled as gifted and we'll get into that, I think, next time when we meet. But he would always get done fast and always be done and always come up to me and say, "Mrs. Uncle, did I get the right answer? Did I get the right answer?" When I was starting to change the way I was teaching, I was, I, I turned to him and I said, "I don't know, what do you think?" And he completely melted down, which he would have in this case too, right? So, I, but I love that. It's a great lesson for students that the, the end, that that's, it's the learning that we're more engaged in than just getting the right answer.
Okay, I think we'll move ahead to the next question. "How can we, how can we shift our thinking and beliefs for ourselves and for our children to make striving, stretching and struggling into something that makes us or them feel smart?" So, we just talked about how sometimes we don't feel smart when we are, you know, facing some obstacles, we're not doing things flawlessly. So, what do you think are some strategies-
If we're comfortable and just the way we do things, we don't really stretch ourselves.
So, yeah, what are some strategies you can think of that we can maybe help our kids or do when we're kind of outside of our comfort zone that can help us feel smart or deal with some of those roadblocks along the way? So, you know, with my nine-year-old, one of the things we struggle with a lot is homework. So, when he's doing homework-
I think it's all, we've all been there.
So, when he's doing homework, if there's something that needs a correction on his paper and, you know, we have to go back and fix something, this is a real big trigger for him. He will like lay on the floor and scream and rip up his work and say, "I'm not gonna fix it." This is a huge problem in our house. So, some of the strategies that I've tried to use with him is to praise the process now, not the outcome. So, you know, this is about, not about that you have to get all the answers right, but it's about your learning. So, we're gonna, you know, I wanna make sure that you understand the concepts. Let's work on that. And then, engaging in other activities that are challenging to build stamina that aren't related to homework. So, some of the things that we've done is engaging in challenging games and puzzles, you know, to help them understand that it's okay to do harder things, but make it more fun than homework, because of course, that's not fun in his world. And then, doing activities that are a little bit outside of his comfort zone, but not too far outside of his comfort zone. So, trying to, to get him to do things that are a little bit different than what he might normally do, but not so much different that it's gonna cause a meltdown. And I've actually done that with both of my children. It's worked well with my child on the autism spectrum. So, those are the, some of the things that I've tried to do with striving, with stretching and, and helping them feel smart, even though it's a little bit out of their comfort zone.
And somebody, somebody, and I don't, I don't know, because it's a little farther up in the chat, but somebody had asked us to define "smart" in, in this question. And I think it's just that feeling, I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't have a definition for it, but I think it's when we, it's that feeling we have that we've got this, we, you know, we feel good about it. I, I think that's what she's alluding to in this, in this question.
We have a question on the chat room. It says, "I have a high schooler that doesn't complete his assignments because it requires him to ask for help. Asking for help seems-
I had one of those too.
Asking for help seems shameful for him. How can I change that thinking?" Well, that's, you know, that's definitely a challenge. I think maybe exploring how to get him a little bit out of his comfort zone. It may not be realistic for him to go from not asking any questions to go to just raising his hand and asking questions, but maybe something in between. So, is there another way that he could communicate with his teacher?
Could they email?
Yeah, could they email? Could he write notes to his teacher? Like something kind of in between to stretch his comfort zone, but not make him feel like it's so far out of his realm that he can't do it.
Maybe challenge him. Maybe if he's having a particularly hard time in one class, talk with the teacher, kind of set up a system a little bit. And I think email is a great way to start that. Some, most teachers are pretty responsive if you talk to them ahead of time and explain what you're doing. But then, I, I just think there's some rewards to that too. Like challenge him to do that, but let's not forget to reward for that as well. And it doesn't have to be something physical, you know, something tangible kind of thing. Think, you know, think outside that box. Maybe it's a little bit of extra one-on-one time with you. Although, I don't know in high school if they want that. My boys didn't want that, but you never know.
If anybody else in the group has some ideas for that comment, you can type that in the chat box and then, when you guys receive the chat log, they'll be able to see the responses to that as well.
Yeah.
Other ideas of things that parents are doing. We have a sign in our house that says, "I can do hard things." I think visual prompting is a really good suggestion. It doesn't seem like much, but what we see every day can influence how we think.
But think about how visual our world really is. Think about all of the advertisements that we see and the quirky little tunes that stay within our, within our brains. I don't know what it is about that Arby's commercial that's out right now? The new one that's, sounds like a ballad with the, I have, everybody has, everybody has a name for a fish in the world or something like that. But I, I, there's a lot to be said for visuals, visual prompts for kids.
We have a question from Michelle. She's wanting to know, "What are some challenging things to do with my kids? Any practical ideas?" I would say that there, you know, start with things that are relatively easy to do, like play some challenging games, challenge them to read a book that's maybe a little bit more difficult than what they would normally read.
Maybe read it with them.
Yeah, so, it doesn't have to be anything really extravagant.
Right.
You know, try to look for things that you already have access to within your, your setting, within your home. Try a craft you've never tried before. Maybe just go to a new place you've never been to before.
But I think it's important for you, the parent, to be doing that for yourself and setting that example for your kids, right? By showing them by what you're doing, but also use that verbalizing with it. Like, "I'm gonna try painting for the very first time. I don't know how this is gonna turn out, I'm a little nervous about it." You know, talk about that, self-talk and everything with that.
And do things where you might even fail. Like, you know, "We're gonna try a crossword puzzle today." And maybe that you try it with your kids and it's hard and you say, you know, "Wow, this is a lot harder than I thought. Well, we'll have to practice doing this a few more times and see if we can get better at it."
Right.
You know, so just doing some, some things like that where you might do it with your kids and it might not be super successful.
And I think at first, I think it's, it's hard because that's, that's not the way that I parented, right? That's not, that, I, I think we're turning parenting around a little bit. And I, it's, it's some of what you're dealing with as well. So, it's challenging you to kind of think outside the box too, because that's not the way we were raised, so to speak, so.
I always think of like this, you know, when my son was little, he wanted to make a papier-mache, gosh, it was like for one of those reflections contests and he wanted to make a papier-mache globe. And so, we're like, "Okay, well, we can try." And we tried to make this papier-mache globe and it was really disastrous. But things like that, you know-
Mine was painting on a pumpkin. I gotcha.
But it's good to try those things. And we tried it and it was, it was really difficult. And I said, "You know, you know, it's good that we tried this and we learned some lessons about making a papier-mache globe and if we, you know, maybe we could try it again sometime and here's what we could try different next time, maybe it would be more successful." You know, so verbalize what you're doing and as you're trying new things. Maybe it doesn't work out and that's great too, because then you can talk about, you know, why it didn't work out and what you could try different next time. But if you never try new things with your kids, then you'll never have that opportunity to have some of those failures and have those conversations.
Right.
So, I think the point is to try different things with your kids outside of your comfort zone and things maybe you don't know how to do. And then, go on the internet and get directions and try to figure out how to do it, cook new things. So, when we say try challenging things, it doesn't mean you have to go out and do big extravagant things.
Right, simple things at home.
Yeah, it just means try different new things that maybe you don't know how to do or your kids don't know how to do. Try it, see what happens. Maybe it's success, maybe it's not.
Try a new recipe, have them cook with you, that kind of thing.
Absolutely. Okay, I think we're gonna move on, so we can get to the last couple of questions before we end tonight. Okay, go ahead Becky.
So, question number three. "Did you ever label yourself as a, yourself as a failure? Did you ever label yourself, I need to fix that, as a failure after something negative happened? Failing a test, losing a job, being rejected? Describe a time this happened. How could you have been more like Jim Marshall?" That story is on the bottom of page 33 into 34. Let me just tell you that story really quickly. Jim Marshall was a defensive player for the Minnesota Vikings, football player. He was playing in a game against the 49ers. He had turned and saw, spotted the football on the ground, picked it up and ran for a touchdown, only to discover that he scored a touchdown for the 49ers and not for his own team, the Minnesota Vikings. I mean, I'm just thinking how devastating that would be. It was a game that was on national television, it was broadcasted. He was feeling pretty humiliated. He went into halftime and just said, you know, "I can either, you know, sit and, you know, basically mope about this or I can do something about it. I can right my wrong, so to speak." So, he went back out, had an extra special second half and I do think that they ended up winning the game, if I remember. Yep, so he pulled himself together for the second half. He played some of his best football ever, which contributed to the team's victory. So, it could have been a very different outcome had he been in that fixed mindset where like, "Oh my gosh, I can't believe how dumb I look. I'm not ever gonna go out there again. I was on national television, I just scored for another team," you know. So, I thought that was kind of an interesting anecdote. I had never heard that story before. For myself, just, you know, again, after not, after being told that I would never graduate from college, you know, you, you have those times where you start second guessing yourself. And even after I got into college, I don't know if I've said this to anybody, but I did go to BYU and after the first semester, I was put on academic probation. And I had a lot to work through. I had to really work through that. But I wanted it badly. I wanted to be a teacher and I knew I could be a great teacher. And so, I kept working on it. But it was hard, it was hard to go through that. And I was humiliated to tell my family that I had been placed on academic probation and I'm going to be a teacher. I mean, that just doesn't coincide together.
One of the quotes that the, the story about Jim Marshall that I really liked said, "If you make a mistake, you get to make it right. I realized I had a choice. I could sit in my misery or I could do something about it." And I really liked that quote and I think it, it has a really important message in it is that how we deal with things in life is partly our choice. So, when we have a failure or a setback, like losing a job or being rejected, that's pretty miserable for any of us and it's hard when those things happen. But how we react to that is partly up to us. So, we can decide to really wallow in our misery or we can decide to pick ourselves back up and move forward. So, you know, I, I thought that was a really valuable quote and something that resonated with me is that we have choices in how we deal with things and what kind of mindset we have, even though sometimes it feels like we don't. We do. And we have a couple of comments that it takes time, that changing your mindset takes time.
Absolutely.
I agree with that. This stuff doesn't happen overnight and we've gotta be, we've gotta be nice to ourselves too and not, and not be too-
We have to be good to ourselves.
Yeah, and not be too critical. Nobody's perfect and we can't expect that we're gonna go from fixed mindsets to a growth mindset overnight and that magically we're gonna change all of our thought processes. Realistically, that's not gonna happen. So, don't be hard on yourself and beat down on yourself if this is not happening for you overnight. And we're all gonna have bad moments too. We're all gonna have moments where something happens to us and we feel really depressed and upset about it. And that's okay, you know, when that happens, try to remind yourself about the growth mindset and do the best you can. But sometimes difficult things happen and it does take time to get over that.
Well, and I just choose to believe that my life is always a work in progress, right? I'm not the same as when I was, when I was 20 and I wouldn't wanna be. I'm having different experiences now and so, I love that. And being open to those experiences and being able to really be in the experience is, is great now. At 20, I don't know that I was ready for that.
We have a comment from Crystal. She just says that it's hard when she's in environment, in an environment that continues to send messages that growth isn't acceptable and creativity is threatening authority. As I say, this is, as I say this out loud, I think it is ridiculous that I question myself when clearly it is the system that is broken. However, when I think about how, when, where, or sorry, when there is a problem with- when there is a problem with everyone around you, look at yourself, I have a hard time at the point, at that point, not taking it personally when creativity is viewed as insubordination. You know, you're right, there is a lot of cultural issues involved with the growth and fixed mindset. But that's the part we can't change. We can't change what other people think and some of the cultural things about our society. But what we can change is what we think about things. And that's really what this book is talking about. Clearly, there are society, aspects of our society that revolve around a fixed mindset, and we can't do a lot about that. And I think what we can take out of this are the things we can control, which is what we think and the messages that we give our children.
Absolutely.
Those are the things that we can control. And that can feel maybe a little limiting, because there are aspects of the way that our culture is that we don't have influence over. But I think for this, we really wanna focus on what are the things we do have influence over. And that would be our own thought process and how we can influence our kids. Because as parents, we do have a lot of influence over what our kids hear and the messages we send them.
And I see this as catching, right? If we're doing it, if we're having this in our home, we have other kids that come over to our homes. I mean, I just think it's gonna go on and on and on. So, we can do our little part to help to change society and what's going on.
Okay, we're gonna move to our last question, because we're getting close to the end here.
Oh, gosh, it always goes so fast.
"What are some strategies we can use with our children to help prevent them from labeling themselves as a failure?" And I saw some comments earlier in the chatroom talking about labels. So, some of the things that I had written down is teaching them that failure is part of learning. You know, so I think we've talked a little bit about that. But one important concept that I feel's been important for myself as a parent is that if we never give our children opportunities to fail, they're never gonna learn this concept.
Right, and how, teach them not only how to fail, but how they work through that failure, how to work through that, how to pick yourself up and keep going and try again. Those are important lessons that we can teach our kids while the price is small.
Right, right. And then I think we have to model getting through failures to them as well. So, again, as we experience difficulties in our own lives, I think talking to our kids about that and how we got through that is an important strategy as well. Also, in your resources, resource list that we gave you, there's some really good growth mindset videos that are really great for elementary-age kids that talk about failure and how failure helps your mind grow. It's a series of five videos, and they're really, really awesome. So, if you have an elementary-age kid and you're trying to reinforce this concept, I've actually used them with my nine-year-old, and it's really helped him to understand the concept of what a growth mindset is and how failure is not always a bad thing. And if you have a visual learner in your house, I think that can really help.
Absolutely.
Let's see what people are saying in the chatroom. Sorry, I'm scrolling down, and there's a lot of comments.
Yeah. I'll scroll from the bottom up. So, Toni Lopez, "Our society doesn't really allow for kids to be failures. Everyone always has to get a trophy. Then, when these kids get to high school, they don't know how to deal with failure, and suicide becomes their only option." I can't, I would hope that suicide wouldn't be their only option, although we are seeing more of that in our state. But I see this. I mean, I, my kids were in that generation. You know, we played Junior Jazz. We didn't win one game, yet every kid got a trophy to say that they were a champion. Are we really doing our kids any favors by saying that? I don't think so. But I also realize that that's what we're living in. So, it is hard to get out of that. But again, I think we can only control what can go on in our own home and with our kids.
Somebody made a comment about teaching our children resilience. I think that's a great strategy.
Absolutely.
Another mentioned that there's a lot of books about how to teach children resilience. I think that's a really important skill. And that's kind of another buzzword that's out there is resilience.
Yep, absolutely.
So, that's something that you could...
Grit, grit's another one, along with mindset.
We have somebody talking about anxiety and depression. How does this play into mindsets? We actually are gonna, in I think our next session, we're gonna touch on this topic a little bit, and there's some reading in the book about it. So, I think next week, you're gonna read a little bit about anxiety and depression, and then we'll discuss it in our chat next week.
Crystal, I love your thought, "Throw the trophy in the garbage with the homework." Love that, throwing it in the garbage, love that. We could start a new revolution. To be honest, I think sometimes those trophies mean more to us parents. As I have recently moved and trying to box things up, I wanted to save all of these trophies for my boys, and they're like, "They want nothing to do with them." And I'm like, "But these are your memories." And they're like, "No, they're not, Mom." So, I could learn from them.
Talk them through it, help them see what they have learned, and talk about ideas of how to do things differently. I think that's great. I've done that with my kids before, and you know, they, they crying, and they're like, "I didn't do it right," and, you know, and talking through, well, let's talk about, you know, what you did do and the good things you accomplished. And if they're feeling like they didn't do it right, you know, what could they try differently or what supports are out there for them? And I know this is gonna be a challenge for my oldest. He just got accepted to the University of Utah next year to go to college.
Whole new chapter.
And, you know, one of the big things for sure is gonna be to figure out what kind of supports are available there. Because there's for sure gonna be times where he faces challenges and isn't sure how to proceed. So, teaching them how to get support is really important too.
Teaching them to advocate for themselves on what they need, right? Because you'll soon find out, Missy, that you won't be able to get the information you've been able to get in high school. I have learned that the hard way. Many counselors at the college have told me that my kid is an adult, and I would beg to differ with that. So, it is hard. It's hard to let them go. It's like, I still wanna control that environment. But, yeah, it's important to teach them to advocate for themselves.
Well, it looks like our time is just about up for today. It's gone by fast, but we're so thrilled by the level of participation, and we just thank you guys so much for all of your participation. Our next session is gonna be February 28th from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. We're gonna be reviewing chapters three and four. So, we'll look forward to that. And it's often helpful, even if you have read the chapters, to just look through the little study guide, and then if you get a chance to look through the questions in advance, that's helpful as well. We will send out an email to you with this session's recording and also the chat log from tonight. So, if you were having trouble keeping up with the comments, you'll have a chance to read those. If you have questions for Becky and I, you should have our email addresses there.
Absolutely.
In the materials that we sent out. So, you can send us an email if you have a personal question for either one of us. Thank you again for joining us, and we will look forward to seeing you next week.
Same time, same place. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.